The Board of County Commissioners is now in recess. This meeting of the County Commission acting as a local planning agency is now convened.
Mr. Chairman, this is the final public hearing on what's been referred to as the St. George Island Corridor Overlay. I'm going to read into the record the title of the ordinance. It says, "An Ordinance of Franklin County, Florida, Creating the St. George Island Corridor Overlay District for Property Located Within a 2,100-foot Radius at the Center Point of the Intersection of Gulf Book, excuse me, Franklin Boulevard and Gulf Beach Drive on St. George Island, Florida, as described in Plat Book Two, Page Seven, Franklin County, Florida, excluding the area east of the east boundary of Third Street East and west of the west boundary of Third Street West, providing for exemptions, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date, and hopefully..." I'm sorry to keep taking my glasses on and off. I broke my bifocals a couple of weeks ago. These are not bifocals, so I can see the distance with glasses, but I can't see up close with glasses, so y'all just please bear with me. So that is the title of the ordinance. This is your meeting is the LPA. My advice to the board is that you refrain from making any comments until you've received all of the public comments from the public, if there are any persons here that care to speak. Mr. Pierce has some testimony that he's going to provide to you concerning the planning necessities and benefits of having a St. George Island Overlay District, and how this ordinance complies with those planning benefits. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I will then go over the details of this ordinance with you once we receive public comment, and also Mr. Pierce's testimony at this time. Mr. Chairman, if you would call for public comment.
Any public comment concerning the ordinance that we are discussing here?
Hello, I'm Daphne Evenoff. The district of intent. I'm grateful to have lived on St. George Island for 21 years, and in East Point for the last nine. I presently own and have owned two commercial lots in this corridor, and it's Zone C4, and I plan to reopen my gallery and studio on this property. And that is why I'm grateful that the county has decided to limit the business on beautiful St. George Island, which should give the working capital of our county, East Point, an opportunity to prosper. Keep in mind that East Point is the gateway to St. George Island, and points west and east, Carabel and Appalachia Cola, Appalachia Cola once called West Point. And all our visitors don't just go to St. George Island, they pass through East Point. So if you're afraid what our county might look like for our visitors, our tourists, then you have forgotten a federal highway. So for this, I'm grateful. I'm grateful that you're limiting what can be, the commerce can be done on St. George Island, and perhaps that this love of St. George Island will flow to East Point, the working front, the working capital of Franklin County. That's my first comment. Prohibited uses in structures. The last one has been added, number 16, massage pollers. I know many of us work very hard, and massage is essence to our relieving pain when we're in a time and period of epidemic drug addiction. Opioids. Let's do hands-on therapy. Let's do spas on St. George Island. People can come there and recover. What about a beautiful rap, seaweed rap, mud bath, sandy, and a massage afterwards? I think we need to reconsider a massage parlor. Yes, it's known as the oldest profession in the world, but I think with regulation and the fact that everyone on St. George Island does keep an eye on their neighbor, I think any foul play would be noted. In the segment on overlaying development standards, I'm just wondering, is the building orientation, is this for new construction only, or existing? My two, my building is on two lots, and presently it faces the short side. Its orientation, it had, it was a trailer.
New construction.
So it's only new construction. And on number seven, on the non-commercial boat storage. Yeah, I went there and, yeah. I don't like what I see at my own property at the moment, and that's going to be changed. But I do have a question. There are two lots there. Does that mean that there could be a total of four boats allowed? When I have a lot 21 and 23, does that mean two boats per each parcel, each lot? So I think that needs to be explained. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mason Bean, St. George Island. I think y'all have great intentions, but I think you're trying to fix something that isn't broken. We've got a C2 zoning that has been in place for 60 years and has served us well. I think the prohibited uses and structures that you have in here could easily be amended with our C2, amend the C2 to include these items. The ordinance I have, you have stricken the boat storage and the roofs and the sidewalks. Is that true? Have I got the correct ordinance?
Sidewalks and roofs, but not the boats.
Okay, this is in lighter print. Looks like it was stricken. Anyway, I just hope that we, you don't handcuff our future growth and development. I think the real cancer on St. George Island is in the C2 zoning. Residential is a prohibited use. The real cancer is the shotguns, the three bedrooms, three baths. Not opposed to C4. C4 is a retail, commercial use with a residence up top. That was the intent. I hope we can go back and look at that. So you've put the boat, you've declared war on boats, I'd call it. Not happy with this. It's a good intent, like I say. I hope you'll reject this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Well, y'all know who I am.
We do.
So I'll go short on the introduction. I own the property that covers 26 acres on the west side of St. George Island, as you're coming off the causeway. I own four homes as well on St. George Island. Two of these are family homes, my father's home on Pine Street, my grandfather's home on Gori. I'm a fifth-generation resident in Franklin County. Yes, I was gone for a while, but my family started here in 1842, and my family house is right there at the CVS Red Light Junction. I've generously supported the Appalachia Cola Maritime Museum after its founding for the last 11 years in an endeavor to promote and preserve our shared history, and have sought in good faith to utilize the 26-acre property of St. George Island as an expansion campus via restoration of the 26-acre ferryboat basin that was first established in 1952. I remember coming to St. George Island on that ferryboat. Since acquiring the St. George Island property, I've invested over $100,000 in improvements and planning for the property. The property looks much more appealing as a result. I challenge anybody to not agree with that. We did a controlled burn. We've cleared up truckloads of bottles and junk and trash. The property is well-mowed and maintained, and it looks very appealing at this point. I would also add that we are in the, now the sixth year of restoration of a historic paddlewheel boat, 107-footer, that is going to be coming to Appalachia Cola in the future, in the near future. I've said that for six years, but it gets nearer every day. The St. George Island Ferryboat Basin is the intended, one of the intended mooring locations there, which would be a great appeal to St. George Island. Now, my summary conclusion is that I oppose the adoption of the zoning code changes that will be brought forth, that are brought forth before the board for consideration today. The action to remove property ownership rights currently expressly allowed in the zoning code for this commercial property will create great harm and undue spending on legal fees. There are five principal uses in the commercial recreational zoning category: boat ramps and marinas, recreation vehicle parking and camping, fish camps, motels and hotel accommodations with fish camp customers, and restaurants and food services. Those are all the permitted uses, and those, especially the recreational vehicle attribute of it, has been prohibited with this new ordinance and this overlay, as we call it. The proposed overlay plan for the zoning code will change this list to include expressly prohibited items two, three, and four, leaving only boat ramps and restoration and restaurant and food services as available alternatives. Yet it even eliminates these two because they are not otherwise referenced in the overlay Especially disturbing is that whoever drafted this document includes reference to sex toy shops. Who's putting a sex toy shop out there on St. George Island in the commercial district? And other hookah, hookah bar and lounge, tattoo parlors. There's none of that on deck here, none of it. Why is that in there? Is it to kind of group fish camps in with tattoo parlors and adult sex toy? I mean, you're laughing, but it's offensive that this even goes into the code of Franklin County. Those things wouldn't be allowed anyway with the existing zoning. The moratorium and overlay was concocted as a result of RV permit applications only. No other items in the newly developed list of excluded activities in the overlay district have been brought before the planning department or PNC. Have they? I guess that's a unanimous no. Financial harm to the property owner. The values of the property will be significantly reduced with the reduction in permitted uses. The County Commission intends to make no financial reparations to the owners thus harmed. They have sought and received assurance from their outside legal counsel, the Theriak and Spain law firm, that this will be achieved. David Theriak went on the record in a county commission meeting during the original hearings on this moratorium that he could ensure that the Burt Harris Act, the Florida law that addresses inverse combination statutes, will not apply. Do you intend to prevent any kind of reparations for damages? If anybody does not intend that, speak up. I think it's been part of the plan with this legal strategy that they're going to take away, that you, with this moratorium or this overlay, are going to take away ownership rights of real estate that were vested in this property with the zoning code. It's unbelievable that you would conceive such a thing. It's illegal. I think that is why these perverse additions to the prohibited uses, such as adult sex toy shops, have been added because I have seen, in my review of case law on this matter, that these kind of things have led to moratoriums and overlay districts. This is not a sex toy shop kind of issue. It's totally different, and it's insulting that these kind of things are added in this document. We want to be known by going to this extreme. In addition, the overlay plan has deficiencies. The plan lacks charrettes or conceptual drawings commonly found in planning documents that permit applicants to, that permit applicants are expected to provide. When I sought permit to dredge and maintain a ferryboat basin, I came in here and did an hour-long presentation with a 60-page document, the history of the basin, what it would look like with a renovated harbor, and that was cast aside, even though it was unanimously supported by the Board of Adjustment and by planning and zoning. Why is that? We could have had a boat harbor underway now, yet you chose to limit that use and eliminate the ability to have a marina. That was recommended by your own planning and zoning advisory board and the Board of Adjustment Advisory Board. It's frustrating. You're taking away every right from this property. That was explicitly identified in item number one of the permitted uses. Boat ramps and marinas. And that boat ramp and marina is needed. It was because of that denial that I sought the next item on the list as an alternative, which was recreational vehicle parking. And that dredge spoil sale permit that was issued is only good for creating a sand mountain above the V-zone, which is going to run all the way along bayshore. None of that spoil will be able to use to surround the basin to prevent flooding of docks and vehicles, or other storage devices that are necessary for boating. Participation. Neither of the two largest landowners, that being Walter Armistead and myself, have been afforded the opportunity to participate in county meetings to evaluate the overlay proposal. Why is this? Why is this? Why weren't we contacted? I sent a letter requesting that I be included and received no response. You don't want to hear from the people that are being affected? I have to come to this kind of forum to bring this thing forward? That's insulting, and it's questionably a violation of due process. There should be disclosure when meetings occurred that everyone was involved. So who was involved in putting this sex toy shop prohibition and related matters together? Who was behind that? Was it Theriak in Spain? I will presume it was so, unless I'm told otherwise. Were there any members of the community involved? And why weren't the landowners involved? It's atrocious. Legal standing of the matter. There are laws and rules encompassed in Franklin, in the Franklin County zoning code, which prescribe processes and procedures by which land use matters are evaluated and approved or denied collectively referred to as due process. In the case of Walter Armistead, it was found by Judge Terry Lewis, our new circuit court judge, District Two, that the action of the county was a, quote, "fundamental abuse of due process and thus an illegal act." When he came before this planning and zoning board, it had been approved by the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, and then came in here with no citation of fact or issue, it was denied. That is a fundamental abuse of due process, as ruled by the judge. The matter should have been evaluated in a quasi-judicial hearing, and you've been ordered to do that, in a rehearing of the matter. With respect to my application for an RV park, that was approved by the planning department and put on the agenda for hearing by the planning advisory, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board. And it was printed on the agenda. Kazintai. I hope you're not coming down with something. Okay. The flu's been a bad one this year. At the start of the meeting, the county planner indicated that he had been told to remove the RV park from the agenda with no reason provided, even though a representative of my representative, Dan Garlic, was present, I was out of town on a business meeting, was present, and a statement was made contesting the inappropriate handling of the matter to which no response was made. This failure to follow due process in Franklin County, in the Franklin County zoning code due process, has been brought forth in a lawsuit along the same path as Walter Armistead. How is it that this Planning and Zoning Board County Commission violates its own rules that the rest of us must follow? Is that fair? You're stepping on our heads, and we're having to spend great amounts of money to combat these legal affronts. In conclusion, therefore, the county and the county attorney have not abided by procedural due process as prescribed in the Franklin County zoning code, thereby putting themselves above the law that they are supposed to uphold, and thus they are acting illegally. This is a failure on Mike Schuler's part. I think it was bad advice given him from Theriak in Spain. They place themselves above the applicants and ordinary citizens required to follow due process in the Franklin County zoning code. I will come back to this, but the essence has been that it has run up legal fees to have their actions taken to court and lost at great cost to the county. I'm going to skip forward to a moment on the financial analysis. How much money has been spent on this matter? I know what Walter and I have spent. What has been spent by the county? Does anybody know, or is that a secret? Do you know, Mr. Schuler?
I'm sorry?
Well, how much money's been spent?
I do not know.
Well, the money spent by me has been close to $50,000, and it's been $40,000 from Walter Armistead, so that's $90,000. And that's not even including all the preparation that went on in the preparation of this overlay district and this moratorium thing. It's well, it's got to be well over $100,000 unless you're paying him, you know, minimum wage. And I saw the response for a public records request that came to this planning department and to Mike Schuler on the 15th of last month about getting public records. And administrative relief, as identified in the moratorium language and in records relating to this whole moratorium project. We received a partial reply, but on that reply, there was no reference to being involved in the planning process, to development of the overlay district, and there was no response to the administrative relief questions and application. And in that email from Mr. Schuler here to Patrick Floyd, who's handling this matter along with other top-flight experts in real estate law in Florida, was a copy to three different people from the Theriak Law Firm. You're paying these guys probably $400 to $500 an hour to read through emails. And more suits are to follow, a lot more. This is going to be heavily litigated because you're ripping away significant property rights and abusing your citizens with the taxpayers' money. It's not your money. You are custodians of the funds. You're being duped. If you don't know what's being paid on legal fees, you're being led down a rosy path because it is significant, it's going to become much more significant. Four more lawsuits are active on this matter. One of them, which should be filed today, was for the inappropriate response to the public records request that I guess was advised by Theriak. I don't know. But it is illegal to not meet the letter of the law in providing a response to public records. And this is the kind of gigantism shift that falls in line with adult sex toys as listed prevented.
Why are you hung on the sex thing?
Because it's offensive.
Attorney asks you not to say that.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to tell you that this is in line and in keeping with all the other activities on this thing. I mean, how repugnant is that, that it has to go to that kind of level, like that's what any of us plan to do? That's why I'm bearing on it, Commissioner Massey. I take it as a great personal insult. You would too, if it was your project and you were accused and lumped in with doing sex toy sales. I would think you would be. I certainly am. Walter Armistead certainly is, and I think most people in the commercial district are as well. Accounting legal fees will probably go over half a million by the time this is all heard. The Burt Harris statute, which was specifically designed to provide relief to property owners on actions of this nature, is at issue here as well. The degradation of property may well exceed $5 million because of the discounted net present value of revenue streams that would come from an RV park. Those funds, when that award is given, you will have already done this moratorium, and it will already be an ordinance, and you will have no choice but to pay it. And the legal fees and the fees of experts for the injured property owner will have to be paid by the county. Did anybody advise all of that? I mean, what, and this whole thing about Burt Harris not applying being stated by your hired gun, David Theriak, is going to get you in a lot of problems, because I'm not going to let this go. I'm going to tell you. I've been in a lot of legal matters in my life, professional, contractual, and you stand to be damaged severely, and you should take the interest of Franklin County in our funds, me being one of them, and how they are spent in this matter. Who is the winner in this matter? This Theriak and Spain law firm. By the time all concludes, three to five years from now, the county will have paid over $1 million in legal fees to help navigate a catastrophic mess with no results and no benefit to anyone in the county. Perhaps this is time for you to consider an alternative assessment of your goals and how to go about them before you drink too much of the Theriak and Spain law firm Kool-Aid. I'm serious. They characterize their losses as wins and laughing at these missteps all the way to the bank, while they play us as all as idiots. I was not at the lawsuit, but I, the hearing with our district judge, Mr. Terry. They claimed and proclaimed that it was a big victory. But a fundamental, a declaration of fundamental lack of due process, abuse of due process is a serious indictment upon the integrity of this board and of Franklin County. You should take it as such. And these others are going to work out the same way. Pulling the item for consideration of the RV park off the docket in that planning and zoning meeting was certainly an abuse of due process, and whoever ordered that is at the height of the problems in doing these things. It's a very serious matter, and it's going to be litigated heavily. How many more cases must you lose before this reckless plan bankrupts the county? Are there no other priorities that would take precedent on the use of these funds? The money could have gone for better schools, fix the hospital, bring in jobs. And what is it doing instead? It's stifling jobs. Jobs that would be utilized, that would be paid to prepare for an RV park, to employ the staff to maintain and run that facility, tax revenues from increased sales and rentals, and the benefit to the former, the existing commercial district, which has been in a decline for the last 20 years, largely because of the closure of the harbor by Hurricane If they're, when RVs come to town, they look for things to do. They don't have transportation. They would be predominantly landbound to that commercial district where there are retailers, restaurateurs, grocery store, and various recreational activities, such as at the lighthouse, the kids' park, the charter fishing business, that would be, they would be landlocked, and it would be a tremendous, tremendous economic benefit to the historic district, which has been crumbling. And to specify the kind of construction that has been laid out here is very, is very permanent in nature. And I want to ask, RV park consideration. Is preventing an RV park really worth all this waste of time and money, really? Let's evaluate the matter a little bit more clearly. One. One, economic opportunities increase tax revenue and jobs. Business district on St. George Island, as I just mentioned, would see a financial stimulus. It would be a fantastic addition to the St. George Island Business District. Mostly from foot traffic coming from the RV parks. Additional customers within walking distance to Historic Business Center would come from the RV park to help in revitalizing the district. Loss of jobs in construction and ongoing services, we mentioned that. Loss of tax revenues to the TDC. Loss of increased real estate valuations due to the improvements. And consider this. An RV park is the best alternative for an interim land use. The light infrastructure required for an RV park, roads and underground utilities, can be removed at minimum cost when a higher and better land use involving permanent structures such as buildings are merited. Once buildings are present, then changes will be very costly. Reckon out a building or hotel or large permanent land-based structure is a lot more costly than pulling out roads. A dozer could go and do that within a week. The emerging market forces and economic opportunities should be allowed to drive improvements, not punitive legal actions and ill-conceived restrictions. That's what America's about. That's what entrepreneurialism about. Entrepreneurialism lets the owners make the decisions about what are best based on financial consequences with which they must live. The drive for making a profit is what determines the land's use. Concerns about property value decreases were mentioned in the moratorium hearings. That an RV park may cause the property value of your home to be, on St. George Island, to be devalued. I did some research on that. In RV, number one, an RV park already exists on St. George Island, which nobody seems to have issues with losing value. Several RV parks are along Highway 98, which seemingly present no issues. And moreover, there's a question to the valuation of appraisal, tax appraisals. Have they been lowered as a result of any of the proximity to RV parks? Have taxes gone down because of a lowered valuation? That's a very black and white determinable factor. And if it's not been determined that the price valuation of a property should be devalued because of the presence of an RV park, you can just throw that out the window. In fact, my Google search and research found that no such studies existed. And the only thing where RV parks, RVs decrease property value, which there was a lot of listings on this, is when they're parked in somebody's yard. I know everybody's ready to get to lunch. I prepared this document and I'm going to give this copy to the Apalachicole Times. This copy.
To your attorney, Mr. Schuler.
I skipped over a number of things. It's a comprehensive document and the bottom line is that you're taking a great risk with the funds of Franklin County by pursuing this adoption of this ill-conceived overlay. It's been an abuse of due process and one of the key factors too, I should bring forth, I did not read. But these applications by both Mr. Armstead and myself for an RV park predate any official action on a moratorium. The moratorium, it is very questionable whether a moratorium can be applied retroactively or a new overlay district can be retroactively applied to matters that were already submitted before the advisory board and/or planning and zoning board, which is you. I feel certain that there will be another ruling of misuse, of fundamental failure or abuse of due process when it comes to bringing this case of where the RV application was pulled off the P&amp;Z Advisory Board agenda. That will end up in a quasi judicial hearing as well. And both of these predate any moratorium hearings or any action to stop this RV development from happening. Walters was approved by the P&amp;Z Advisory Board and denied by you. Therefore, the main thing you're seeking to lasso in with this overlay district is to stop these two RV parks. Is that not the case? I mean, that certainly has the appearance that this was brought forth as a result of RV park applications. You're going to lose that. You're going to lose that ability to stop them because the matters were submitted in good order and approved by the planning department to be heard prior to anything happening on this ordinance. So you're going to go through all this legal fees and all these court costs, and there's still going to be RV parks, most likely. Is it worth it? Is it worth it to go through this? And why don't, why don't we work together? Why don't we get, why didn't, why wouldn't Walter or I, or any others apparently in the commercial district, ask to participate in this planning process? Why was that? Why was the here, the initial hearing on the moratorium scheduled with only 10 days out before the first hearing, before the, between the notice in the paper and the first hearing and then the second hearing 10 days after? It's because it was construed and constructed to make sure that nobody did have an opportunity to come forward. Please understand that this is a very serious matter and portends great financial harm not only to me, but to others in this district. And those are going to be paid by the funds of Franklin County of which you are stewards. I urge you, with all grace and dignity that I can muster, to not pass this overlay zoning district because of the problems it's going to create. I've got better things to do with my time, I'm sure y'all do. It's going to get, it's going to get very intense when these lawsuits start all ringing home. And ask your, ask your legal advisors, Mr. Schuler, how he's going to prevent removal of principal uses from a commercial recreational zoned property from being considered as losses in property value. That's how that works, isn't it, Mr. Schuler? The value pre-change minus the value post-change is the value that is adjudged as due from the county. And I don't want to do that. I would rather y'all let businessmen run the business. And I also beg you, please reconsider that application that was approved unanimously by Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning, both entities approved it, to put a harbor in there like I had proposed. So we can put a paddle wheel boat in there and run a Sea Scout High Adventure program for youth. That's what I want to do. That's what I came to you with to begin with. Please reconsider it. Let's open up that line of dialogue again and think about what we really want to do here. Mr. Pierce, Commissioner Pierce, you and I had a lot of conversations along this topic. When we went through this in January last year and we put it on the back burner and we went back and forth and back and forth. Let's open up that line of dialogue again with the planning department. I would love to see that happen, that is my first priority, but failing that first priority, I'll go after the second priority. Is there any question or anything else I can answer? I just urge you to really think about this and maybe delay it. Put it on the back burner like you did with the harbor project. Put it on the back burner for three or four years and see what develops there and then come back and say it. Because I think you're going to see those RV parks regardless of what you do. And I'd rather not do that, I'd rather do a harbor, but if you force it, force my hand, I will, I will fight the battle for RV park. Thank you for your time and consideration and your allowing me to go on beyond my three minute limit. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name's Joelyn Pierman. I'm a longtime resident of St. George Island. I had no intentions of making a comment and I'll make this brief. George Floyd, I've known George Floyd for some years. His, first of all, having a harbor and a full-blown marina are two different things. I, when I moved to St. George Island, I invested in my life. It's, when you get down to it, it's all about the money. St. George Island is the honey hole for Franklin County for money. Everybody wants to be out there, but it's an island. It's only so big. The more people you bring in, the more garbage, the more sewage, the more traffic. I lived down at the end of Bay Shore around 7th Street. RV park in there is going to create just, I already, this Memorial Day, I left the island. There were so many people there. Fourth of July, spring break. There are more people coming to that island than ever before. In the last 30 years, I've never seen so many people. But it's all, everybody wants to make that money and if they figure if they're going to make money, they got to have it out on the island. Let's use East Point, let's put some things over there. The island is, I didn't move there, I can't wait until they put in RV parks. I can't wait until they build a pharmacy. I invested in my life. It's not, you can spend my money to fight certain growth on that island as opposed to improving the hospital. I, you know, I don't, that's not a problem with me. Yes, I, I just, there's got to be a limit as to what goes there. I don't know why he's insulted by the play toys or whatever. I don't think that was a personal thing. Tattoo parlor, there's one there, it's had a tattoo, but people have been in there to put on permanent tattoos, they use that. You know, I wasn't insulted. He said, I'm sure everybody, no, no insult there. It's not a big deal. But please, please do not give up the fight as far as what goes there and what, you know, think of the traffic, think of the garbage, the sewage, everything that's generated by the more people that are there. The businesses, you know, you can't, you want to put something there because you're going to help somebody else. RV park's not going to help me and I've been living there for a lot of years. It's not going to do anything for me but create a lot more traffic. A lot more garbage to pick up because that happens to me, my grid from Harry Age to 4th Street. I'm part of the St. George Island Trash Patrol and, but, and like I said, I had no intentions of getting up, but just keep in mind what I said, there are residents there that, that there's got to be growth. You know, I understand that you have to, you have to have growth. It's going to happen. But let's, let's try to keep it contained. Yes, I don't want St. George Island to become another Hilton Head, you know, a place like that. It is, it is such a special place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record. What you got, Mike?
I have a public comment to read into the record because someone she couldn't make it today. It's Ms. Pamela Bonner, actually it's the same Hannah Tattoo Parlor it was just referenced to. Ms. Pamela Bonner, I have a temporary Hannah Tattoo Shop, Airbrush and Art Gallery on St. George Island. It's across from Mont Ebbies Ice Cream Shop in the old Starfish Motel. She's been, I've been in business there for several years. It's a family-oriented business. This is informed those who haven't visited us that the Hannah Pace is made of a plant. It lasts one or two weeks, save for children and adults. I always discourage the, of course, tattoo parlors like in Panama City because they're permanent and they hurt. My Hannah's squirted out of a tube, a small hole, it stains the skin and it's fun and it fades away in about two weeks. Letter's just explaining the difference in tattoo parlors with the needles and her Hannah stain shop since earlier. What she's worried about, Commissioner, she wanted to make sure that this ordinance will not force her to close her business, you know, if it's, if she's not, you know, depending on the wording. And that, that was her point of this letter. That's it, I'll give it to the clerk, to the public.
Any other public comment? There being no public comment, we will close this meeting of the local planning agency?
Well, Commissioner, before we close that, we need to get some testimony from Mr. Pierce concerning the overlay district and how it fits into a planning perspective and how the ordinance also complies with that overlay.
Right. And Mr. David Theriak presented the idea of overlay districts to the county. I forget when it, when it was. The, the structure, there was a public hearing or at least a public comment, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so this was on the agenda, so there was at least one opportunity for people to comment. And Mr. Theriak had used the comments he received through the planning office to help draft, or not help, but he created the structure of this document with public input that he received from the Public and, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. But there is certainly, and Mr. Schuler wants me to talk about the structure of it, the, it's certainly a legitimate way of dealing with zoning issues by having overlay districts. There are lots and lots of types of overlay districts. This one in particular, it's considered an entry or corridor district because it's your entrance to the island. And so certainly as you want to maintain the visual and the value of the island, one, the first place to do is you come onto the island. I understand the idea about East Point, that's certainly a legitimate issue, but you take jurisdictions at a time. This is not a countywide overlay district, this is just St. George Island overlay district is how we created it. So the issue is, what do you want to see on the island as you come on? And the reason that some of these items are listed in here as prohibited uses is clearly these are things that you don't want to see. And the whole purpose of creating ordinance is to control things before you get into a retroactive position. So that's why all these items are listed here, is that the basis of the input that we've received through planning and zoning, as well as comments made at county commission meetings periodically, is that these are some items that you don't want to see or some uses you don't want to see on the island. So they are all lumped under prohibited uses. Not one is any more, you know, important than the other, but they are all items that were seen to be issues you did not want to see coming onto the island. If the island's commercial district had been bigger, maybe we'd have a different approach. But the commercial district is only three blocks long and two blocks wide. It's a very small area and so the whole district is included in the overlay district just because you have a main road coming in that bisects the district and then a main road going east-west, which also then quadrates the district, we use that word. And so everything ended up being included in the overlay district. You know, and again, it was, the purpose was to create a district, a commercial district on the island that represented the kind of community we thought the island wanted, that we were trying to respond to the issues and the interests of the people living on the island by creating this list of prohibited uses consistent with what the county had looked at in the past, and that's, that's where the list came from. And so the structure of it is that it included all of the court, all of the St. George Island Business District because of the structure of our transportation network out there. Had it been a bigger district, maybe areas would not be in the corridor, but they all are. Mr. Schuler, I don't know, anything else particularly you want me to address? I think that's adequate. Okay.
And Commissioners, I did want to go over the final version of this draft ordinance. There have been, this has been a living document since your first public hearing that occurred in October of last year, your planning and zoning, that the public meeting that Mr. Pierce was referring to and the purpose of that meeting, that was publicly advertised for the purpose of bringing in members of the public who were concerned and wanted to present their ideas to the Planning and Zoning Board so those could then be used and incorporated both with your planning staff, Mr. Pierce, and legal counsel to draft an ordinance in which this is now your second and final public hearing in which you will be taking action either to adopt it as submitted or adopt it with changes. You clearly have the authority to table this to another time if you choose to, but I don't, I don't. but I, I don't, I don't necessarily recommend that you take that action. Just I want to point out it is within your authority. As Mr. Pierce pointed out, the purpose, on the findings of fact, the, I think the first two, or the second, the third whereas on page one are pretty important, because it says the county commission desires to establish on St. George Island, Florida, an overlay district with a business district, as it is shown on plat that I referred to earlier, plat book two, page seven. And it is your intent in establishing this overlay district to create a welcome, a district to welcome existing and future residents and visitors to St. George Island, Florida, and to promote the island as a unique, attractive, vibrant, and economically prosperous community. I'm not going to go through and read all of this ordinance to you. It's seven pages long, and this, this is, as I said, the second public hearing that you've had on this. But it does cover all of the issues that we have in various public meetings that you've discussed with me and that we've heard from members of the public. As Mr. Pierce points out, it is the, from Third Street East to Third Street West, and from Appalachian Cola Bay to the beach is, in general terms, the area that is going to be the overlay district. And it does create a district intent, which is to provoke St. George Island, Florida as the, a unique, attractive, vibrant, and economically prosperous community, and to further regulate commercial development for property located within the St. George Island corridor overlay district. Its principal uses, it will allow all uses permitted or permitted to special uses in any underlying zoning district over which the St. George Island corridor district is applied. However, in the event of conflict between the overlay district and the underlying zoning district, and the overlay district would control. And there, there are a list of prohibited structures and uses, as has been discussed here. For example, automotive and engine repairs within a thousand feet of any body of water, one acre or larger. Prohibits adult entertainment, tattoo parlors, hookah bars, the sex toy shop, RV parking, fish camps, billboards and signs larger than ten feet by five feet. I've not received from the board any direction on the size. I had, this, a couple times I've asked for direction from the board. So unless I get any other direction from you, I'm going to leave that prohibition of the billboards of anything larger than ten feet by five feet. There was a question from your planner, Mark Carrington, who has also looked at this ordinance and has given me his comments. One of his comments had to do with, how do we deal with the prohibition on telecommunications towers? And he wanted to know how that would affect placing any new antennas on the water tower that's currently on St. George Island. And it would not. This would, does not prohibit additional antennas. It just would prohibit additional telecommunications towers. Commercial boat storage, there was a question from one of the speakers, whether or not commercial boat storage was still prohibited. And the answer to that is yes. That is on item number eleven. Provides a definition for commercial boat storage. It will also prohibit commercial and non-commercial boat storage of boats and boat trailers on unimproved land. It would prohibit commercial and non-commercial storage of boats on the ground that are not on a road-ready boat trailer. It would prohibit businesses that are operating these inflatables that we had heard about before, mechanical carnival rides and massage parlors. It creates special exceptions for things like hotels and timeshares, churches and community houses. And then it goes on to create general development standards within that district. That brings me to one other procedural point. We had talked in past meetings about whether or not to impose some or any of this ordinance retroactively. The discussion I've gotten from the board leads me to conclude that the board just wants its ordinance to, to apply prospectively, which means if you approve it and when it's filed with the state, it would only apply going forward to any new development application in businesses and things of that nature. But it will not apply retroactively. So unless I hear any other instructions from the board, that is, I'm going to not have any of these provisions apply retroactively. For example, we had discussed possibly, like, covering up the trash receptacles and the storage of outdoor materials for businesses, maybe having those covered up, but things of that nature. But like I said, I'm not getting feedback from the board. So I'm interpreting that to mean this ordinance will only apply moving forward prospectively, not retroactively. One of Mr. Carrington's other questions was how do we define, like, building orientation. All primary structures shall face the front of the lot. His question was, well, how does he know what the front of the lot is on a corner lot? So I've added in a definition for how the Planning Department that will administer this ordinance will determine the front of such lots. It's got overlay standards for outdoor storage, truck docks, mechanical equipment, and waste containers. The regulation that was proposed for roofs has been deleted as instructed by the board. Landscaping, Commissioner Jones had mentioned at a couple of our meetings, some of the public hearings, that he wanted to see the board consider the Florida-friendly landscaping provisions as opposed to what had originally been proposed, which was a distinction between native and non-native vegetation. So I, I felt like the majority of the board was, was moving in the direction of the Florida-friendly landscaping. So I've added that provision into this ordinance. The lighting, we made the change from a maximum of twenty feet to fifteen feet. We have eliminated, it's your direction, the pedestrian walkways. Signage has not been changed. It's the same now as it was to begin with. The building materials, the board's instructions were to strike that out, but not have any restriction on building materials. The alteration of the grade, we deleted the original language, which would have prohibited alteration of natural grade, and instead provided, as you've stated, it will be governed by the existing flood control ordinance. And then the final provision is regarding non-commercial boat storage. It would allow a maximum of two boats on road-ready boat trailers would be stored on an improved parcel. That means unimproved parcels would not be allowed to have the storage of the boats. And that, as far as the way I have drafted this, it's my understanding that a deed of record, as of today's date, if it has multiple lots, they would still only have the ability to put two non-commercial boats stored on that parcel, because, you know, you may have someone that has seven or eight or nine lots, but they would, they would not get eight lots times two boats. If the deed of record had eight lots, it's going to be the two boats based on whatever a deed of record is as of today's date. And that concludes my presentation on the ordinance. Does the board have any questions for me? If not, then my recommendation would be to close this meeting of the LPA and then reconvene as the county commission, and you will once again request public comment on the ordinance.
The meeting of the Land and Planning Agencies is now in recess. The board of county commissioners is now back in session. And we'll move forward. Any comments from the board on the proposed ordinance?
Chairman, should we hear a public comment first, or?
Yeah.
Take public comments.
Public comment? Public comment on the proposed ordinance? Please come forward, state your name for the record.